Order. I am Wes Ayers, the Vice Mayor, and I am standing in for Mayor Julie Smith while she is out of town today. First, we're gonna have our prayer and pledge, Father Lonny Lacy with Saint Anne's Episcopal Church. We'll do our prayer and then Lieutenant Alan Pugh with the Tifton Fire Department will do the pledge.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here. My name is Lonny Lacy and as has been mentioned, I'm the Director at Saint Anne's Episcopal Church here in town. Lot of people don't know this, but Saint Anne's is an old church. We've been around since the eighteen hundreds. And the two guys who built the original church building and helped to found our congregation, well, they were a couple of fellows from a place called Mystic, Connecticut, who came down to harvest the curly pine and ship it over to Brunswick to build ships. Their names were Edmund Tift and Captain Henry Harding Tift, whose pictures we see in this room tonight. And so, the guys who helped to found the city that we love, well, they were Episcopalians. So on behalf of all the Episcopalians, you're welcome. I've been told that I'm encouraged tonight to tell you something about the ministries and such that are going on at Saint Anne's. And I actually don't want to do that. I just want to take a moment to mention something bigger that a lot of our churches are getting involved with here in town, and it's called Family Promise. A lot of folks do not know that tonight, right now, as we speak, somewhere around probably fifty kids in our school system are identified as having no home to go to. That means their families are couch surfing or going motel to motel. Some of them tonight in this city that we love are gonna sleep in their cars. And so churches like Saint Anne's and First Baptist and First Methodist, First Church of the Nazarene, several others, we're coming together to create something called Family Promise, a national organization that we want to be a part of. And I'd encourage everyone to please visit tiftfamilypromise.org to learn more about this because there's no reason that our kids in this town should not have a place to sleep. We think we can address it. We just can't do it by ourselves and we need a few more churches to join in with us. So please, talk to your churches and to your neighbors and support this great effort. Meanwhile, let's open y'all with prayer. Gracious Heavenly Father, as the shadows lengthen and evening comes upon us and the busy world is hushed, we come to this point in the day where we meet about the concerns of our neighbors and of our town. Lord, I ask your blessing upon this city. We give you great thanks that you allowed us to come through Hurricane Michael. We ask your blessing on all those who have suffered any loss from that storm, both here in our town and in our neighboring cities and towns. And Lord, we ask your blessing upon this body tonight. Lord, where there are opportunities, help us to attain to them, to our good and to your glory. And Lord, where there may be any divisions, any dissension, any disagreement, we ask for the grace of reconciliation and friendship, that we might reflect your goodness as neighbor helps neighbor, as neighbor loves neighbor, and as neighbor gives to neighbor. All these things, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
So I rise and say I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Motion. So move. Second. Motion in seconds. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next we have swearing in our new board member, Mr. Solomon Nixon Jr. for Planning and Zoning. Come up front.
Did they do the minutes too?
Yes.
Did y'all do the minutes too?
What?
Did y'all do the minutes too?
Did I skip the minutes?
Hey, I'm not used to this. Alright, let's do the minutes. I'm sorry. Alright, let's do the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Say aye.
Say aye.
Motion in second. Any further questions? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now, let's go to the swearing in the new board members. Alright, Mr. Nixon, if you'll raise your right arm, right hand. I, Solomon Nixon Jr., do solemnly swear that I faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Tifton and that I support and defend the Charter of the City of Tifton as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless provincially hindered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and rule of the disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend the city's expense in training mandated by the State of Georgia. I shall attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, next is the proclamation of Go Light Up Your World Day. Those folks. Alright, well, I guess I'll just read this proclamation then. Whereas a nonprofit collaborative, the Tifton County Commission on Children and Youth, TC3Y, shares the Georgia Family Connections focus of improving the conditions for children, families, and communities by serving as a local decision-making body and bringing community partners together to develop, implement, and evaluate plans that address the serious challenges facing Georgia's children and families. And whereas by working closely with the various community partners, TC3Y is able to foster local relationships, increase policymakers' awareness of local issues, put into action proven practices, and leverage additional funding to support the community plan for Tifton. And whereas having luminaries lit throughout the county at the same time with the same mission of joining together for our children's best interests while envisioning that anywhere you go in Tifton, you will see the light and recognize how unfired if we are as a community, unified as a community, in efforts to ensure that children have a safe and caring environment in the vision of the community-wide event. And whereas by working together with faith-based organizations and community agencies, clubs, businesses, and individuals on this specific day, TC3Y strives to keep the youth of Tifton safe and out of gangs by offering alternative positive activities with hopes that throughout the year, and especially on this day, our community will provide encouraging constructive programs for youth that encourages involvement in positive activities. Now therefore, I, Wes Ayers, Vice Mayor of the City of Tifton, and on behalf of the Tifton City Council, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2018, as Go Light Up Your World Day for the City of Tifton. And I encourage my fellow citizens to join me in working with the Tifton County Commission in Children and Youth as we endeavor to provide the best community and environment for the children, youth, and families of Tifton, given under my hand and seal of the City of Tifton this fifteenth day of October, 2018. Another proclamation here. For the retired educators. Alright, we got some folks here for this one. Come on up. Whereas the Governor of the State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 4th, 2018, as Retired Educators' Day in Georgia. And whereas in Georgia, there are more than one hundred and twenty-four thousand retired educators, of which over twenty-seven thousand five hundred are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of the respective communities across the state. And whereas appropriate day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. And now therefore, I, Wes Ayers, Vice Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of Tifton City Council, do proclaim November 6th, 2018, as Retired Educators' Day for the City of Tifton. And call upon citizens of Tifton to join me in observing the day to which appropriate manner honoring retired educators, given under my hand and seal on this day, fifteenth day of October of 2018. Thank y'all so much for everything that y'all do. Alright. Next, we have a presentation recognizing Duncan McCloskey for supplementary community service.
Well, good evening. I'm Lori Felton, and I represent Keep Tiff Beautiful, board member, and I'm the coordinator for the Adopt a Mile program. And for those of you that may not know, we have many miles in this city. And that's one of our areas of focus for our board is litter reduction. We also focus on beautification and recycling. But many people in this community know Duncan McCloskey. And if you haven't, you've probably seen him on the weekend with his hat on and he's picking up trash on the side of the road. And I, and our board, we just want to recognize him for his service, his devotion. On average, every month, I give a report on how many bags of trash were picked up through our Adopt a Mile program. Duncan's the winner every month. He averages about twenty bags of trash a month. Now that's saying something when we just went through our summer of heat when nobody gives a report and it's always Duncan. And he's the individual that goes around. So we would like to recognize Duncan for his service. Duncan, thank you so much for your unmeasurable devotion and service to our Keep Tiff Beautiful. Oh, yes. If you'd like to know more information, you can contact me at keeptiffbeautiful@gmail.com. And I'll gladly give you the information for our Adopt a Mile, our community garden, and our recycling program. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much, Duncan. I know that you work extremely hard keeping our community clean. I've had several conversations with you, and I just appreciate you doing all of that for us. And hopefully we can get more involved to help you because it's more than just one person, but we appreciate all you do for us. Thank you. Alright, next is our public comment. Chief, do we have anybody signed in? Anybody like to speak? Whoever holds your peace? No, I'm just kidding. Alright. Next is our consent agenda. I'll ask the council, do you want to take this all at once or do you want to separate these individually?
I'm just gonna take them all at once.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. I just want to remind the crowd the consent agenda, these items here, we've spoken about in our workshop meeting before already. So again, we have the motion in a second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, under new business, we got resolution to mending landfill tipping fees.
Okay, Mayor, this is the material we've been discussing in the service delivery meetings with the county. We have talked about this for months. The presentation was given just a couple of weeks back. And it was the recommendation that we increase the tipping fees to forty-two dollars a ton for municipal solid waste and then eighteen dollars a ton for yard trash debris. So before you is the resolution. Tifton did adopt this at their last meeting. So I wouldn't recommend that we do this and go forward. Again, this is a reminder that tipping fees haven't been raised since 2007, 2008. So we run a business, and it's very, very important that we look at it as such and that we have the available equipment, material, and et cetera to make sure we have a landfill where we need it to be, especially for compliance reasons. So this has been a long time standing, a lot of work and a lot of detail has gone into it. Again, I want to thank Ricky Hobbie for holding the fort down with his team at the landfill because they really do run a really good landfill. And that's a testimony to what they do each and every day. Do we do things perfect? No. But we certainly, we do what we need to do and we certainly have to do what we are required to do. And we're getting better by the month. So with that, if there's any questions, I believe Ricky is here. If you have any further comments, or I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do I know the adopted motion?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. Give me a second. Wait, 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 second to comments.
Okay, hold on a second.
So you're in a second? Okay, alright.
Surprised, surprised at the comment.
We got a motion in a second and further discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
What Pete said was critical. Two thousand seven, two thousand eight, ten years ago. So residents need to think, in the last ten years, do you know anything that has not gone up? Especially places that employ people. So how would you like to be employed and not get an increase for ten years because we can't raise the fees? So regardless of what you read in the Gazette about the county commission meeting, if you say they're my target, well, when they make statements, you know, slamming the city because of this increase, this increase wouldn't be needed, I'll paraphrase what they said, if it had been, if the landfill had been run properly. Of course, that's their favorite attack line, is the city hasn't run something properly. Well, we gone ten years and haven't had to increase the fee. So the two commissioners that were mouthing off about it, they begrudgingly approved it, but it surely didn't need it because the city had done something else. So one more time, so I would hope that city residents, and keep in mind, these are people that live in the county, okay? They're only concerned about people in the county. They don't realize that we live in the county too. Okay? So, you know, there's a list of things, and I might get into some of them in the comments, about what city residents need to be aware of and how they're being taken advantage of and overpaying taxes led by this same county commission that says the city's not running things properly. Well, let me tell you something, county commissioners, you've been charging city residents for the last at least four years for a service we don't receive. And when we finally pressed you on it, you said, okay, we won't charge anymore and we'll cut our budget in half. But what were you doing the last four years when you were charging city residents? And I said it last time, I said, yeah, enough is enough. I'm tired of paying for things we don't receive. Charging city residents in quick. We've run it pretty darn well to go ten years without an increase.
Thank you, Ian.
Alright, so we got a motion in a second on the table. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next is our resolution providing for a new alcohol beverage license for Sunmark located at 902 Central Avenue. Jessica?
This was previously held by the young man that lost his life in El Dorado. He also had his store here. So now it's under new ownership. We did the background on the applicant and the manager and everything, came back okay. So staff is recommending approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, unto other business, City Manager McCall. Pete?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I wanted to just give an overview. Obviously, we're coming off the heels of the storm. It's a proud moment where I could say really special thanks to the men and women of the Fire Department, special thanks to the men and women of the Police Department, and a special thanks to the men and women of the City of Tifton who helped during the storm. And just, I want to give you a couple of snapshot of what, where we are as far as statistics and some facts. But we had an emergency center set up at the Fire Department for calls. Every city call that came in, whether it's public works or administration, all the calls were funneled into the Fire Department where we had, we had seven ladies and plus Stephen and Jonathan helping answer calls. They took four hundred and fifty-eight calls in a compressed timeframe over a twenty-four hour, thirty-hour period. So that is a lot of calls and they handled it with ease. Morgan did social media posts every hour and on the hour to keep our residents up to date as to what was happening. And again, I don't want to be real specific, but the Fire Department, just in four to six hours during the peak time, they answered thirty-two calls. And again, four to five hours, the Police Department had over fifty-two calls in that compressed timeframe where we could work. Northside Fire Station, Westside Fire Station, the theater, and we had a pavilion damaged with the storm. So we're going to work with the insurance company to make sure we address these. But again, it wasn't devastating except for the pavilion. That didn't last very long. But we hope to rebuild and get this fixed up as much as we can. The yard trash is heavy. And Ricky, just on Saturday, opened up, we had a hundred and sixty-two loads come in from residents. That's a lot of yard trash. And we're not done yet. We're probably two, three weeks in the process of getting these piles off the street. ESG, their response was quick. The crews were on top of the situation. Jeff, Scotty, Adam, and the whole team from ESG just did remarkable work again. Know one hundred percent that when the chips are down, they've been behind us one hundred percent. And obviously, the results show. Chief Bennett, Chief Doughty, Captain Hyman, Danny Wallace, Tim Cooper. Again, the command staff, Danny and Tim were at the EOC fielding calls and making sure dispatch was in tune. And the chiefs and Captain Hyman were orchestrating everything behind the scenes with, we had situations, they were in charge of it. And I can tell you, just watching them and understanding where we were from a city perspective, they did a heck of a job. We're investigating the water loss on the eight-inch main break at one of the companies. So we'll share some data on that. And then obviously recouping, looking at what we have to do for next time. Everything from generators to things that we could improve on, we'll be after-action reviewing with the staff very, very soon. But I'm happy to report all streets are now open as of today and one hundred percent power is restored. And Georgia Power has been champions too with their work side by side with us. So again, that's all I have for tonight. And Clay Sykes is here from ESG. And I'd like, if it's okay, to give him just a couple of minutes, kind of an overview from his perspective. And you know, thirty-plus years in the business as a PE, he could probably not only answer questions like on, you know, this whole situation from his perspective.
Thank you, Pete. Looking at the design of, and redundant element within the system goes out, you don't lose the system. One week ago, if you would have asked me, which system do we operate? ESG operates dozens of water systems all throughout the southeast. And I've been involved with literally, I guess, a hundred or more systems over the past thirty years. And if I were to scratch my head, I would think Tifton has a very robust water system. Let me tell you why. We've got nine water wells distributed throughout the county, basically. And each one of those water wells, we have a redundant power supply. We have power coming in from two different systems, power systems. And then in addition, that one of the wells has a backup power generator. In my opinion, I've always kind of felt like a redundant power supply is superior to a backup power system. Now, in addition to that, that you've got a layer of protection over and above that with basically two and a half million gallons of storage up in the air. What does that mean? That means that theoretically, we average about four point nine million gallons a day of usage. The system could have operated with everything turned off for over twelve hours, recognizing that we lost power about nine o'clock at night. You know, that's in the period of time where you have very minimal water usage normally. So in my opinion, we probably could have gone to at least noon on the day of the hurricane before we would have had any kind of water pressure problem. And so it's, you know, in looking at operating the utility system, you're always balancing a lot of different issues. And one issue was what I think a lot of discussions at City Council meetings revolves around is financial realities and constraints. And so you're always looking at meeting requirements and possibly going a little bit beyond just the regulatory requirements. But that has to be balanced against financial realities. So getting back to my original point, if I were to look at this system, we've got at least twelve hours of supply up in the air available. We've got nine water wells distributed throughout the system. We only really need two of those wells to run in order for us to maintain system pressure. And so Pete contacted us, we were, Pete was talking to Dan Russell, Dan called me. And we were scratching our heads, how is it even conceivable that we're out of pressure at five-thirty in the morning given this very robust water system? And so, you know, it's, and again, a week ago, if you would have asked me to identify the one system that I wasn't worried about, it would have been Tifton, Georgia because in my opinion, the system was so robust from a design standpoint. This certainly makes us rethink some things. And again, Pete will be leading us with a number of discussions about how we can make some investments to minimize or eliminate potential of this in the future. But that's just the quick overview of the system. A key point, a real key point, is that the water quality never suffered during the storm. So all of the bacteriological testing we did afterwards, we were required to do that bull water nose. Once the system pressure drops below twenty PSI, but all of our testing proved there was no problem, all with water quality or health standards.
Would the eight-inch water main, did that break and would that cause the pressure in the?
Absolutely. An eight-inch water main loses several thousand gallons a minute at pressure. It's, 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 that is, that, I left that out. That's the only reason, wow, we left lost water pressure in the middle of the night when there shouldn't have been any demand at all. And we would have needed, you know, probably three water wells operating to maintain pressure with that leak with a sub-a-thousand gallons a minute.
We did, we did a quick calculation. It's twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons per hour we lost. And by the time we caught the leak, that was, it was blowing water for every bit of six and a half hours.
So without that leak, we would not have had?
Would have had any issue at all.
Any issue?
Water was, the power was restored to several of the wells by nine- Water was, the power was restored to several of the wells by nine AM. And, yeah, so, I mean...
So you're telling me we would have, you would say we had water planned, we would have had water till noon without that leak? So there was no poor preparation by the city? There was no fault of the city that we didn't think this thing through, you know, set up? I mean, the system, that main break, maybe somebody has an idea how to do it as it was supposed to.
And Clay, just about what happened?
The other thing, I mean, obviously, we all, everybody's on board of trying to make sure that this doesn't happen again. This storm was unprecedented event, you know. Things that you can think of all day and prepare for. You don't think that a system our size with our type of capabilities would lose all nine wells. However, that seems to be the fact that it can happen. So we need to prepare for that going forward.
That's a really good point. Jeff West and I talked, and you know, we're training ourselves a little differently. When I called Dan at four-thirty in the morning saying, we got a problem, we have to, we have to look at it to what if, any situation from here on out. And we, you know, we haven't done that yet. When, again, we have big systems like that, we have got to look at it differently. We're already taking matters to the next level to say, we're gonna what if? And we're gonna do the same thing on the sewer side, so we don't run into any problems.
Just one final comment, the one well that we had that has a standby generator, it was struck by lightning about six weeks ago.
Six weeks ago.
Six weeks ago. And typically, you have about, I'm gonna say sixteen-month lead time to order one of these panels, all of this equipment. It's not off-the-shelf equipment. It has to be specially made, on order. They don't start working on it until you make the order. And even expediting that, we're looking at nine to twelve weeks. And so the one well that did have the backup generator was struck by lightning in a thunderstorm six weeks ago. And, you know, who could have predicted that?
Just to put a little perspective, I drove through Dawson on Saturday. So we're talking about this, and we were out. There was a line of about forty cars, which I ended up with, and for about five minutes, I realized that they weren't moving, and they weren't going the direction I wanted to go. They were going to a parking lot where there was a van with water. Because last Saturday, they had no water at all. Every restaurant was closed. These people just needed drinking water. So this was Saturday. I don't know if they got it up yet or not. So this affected a lot of people.
But I just, I wanted to tell you, I'm real confident, one hundred and ten percent. And I want to thank Clay and Dan and their team, how they continue to support us, because this is, this is serious business. And we take it for coming here and being part of that. And Jeff, thanks for hanging in there. So we got it, and we're gonna keep you abreast on what we're gonna do to improve it from here.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Clay. Board report?
That's you.
We have two vacancies on the Housing Authority. Megan Campbell, I know she declined that appointment a few months back when, after y'all appointed her. And then Mr. Jim Lever came in a week or so ago and also resigned. And we still have the, oh, and since the last meeting, Jeffrey Daniels has resigned from the HPC.
Okay.
So we have a few vacancies. And I've combined the applicants based on what boards they would like to be appointed to.
I'll tell you, the Housing Authority's probably the most precedent that we need to address. There's been some names circulated, and I'll help in any way I can to expedite that. But we really need to get them, another board member, so they have a quorum. So I think Councilman Terrell had an appointment, or had a suggestion last council meeting, if I remember correctly, so.
You feel confident making an appointment today? Or you wanna hold off on?
Just wait it. Yes, sir. Okay, I'm good. Just you let me know. We could facilitate.
Okay, let's do that.
If we want to do it a couple more times, because I know trying out a meeting, trying to digest this, what Jessica and I could do, it actually send something out a couple times as a reminder, people's names and board appointments that we have to do, so we have some dialogue other than just a meeting. And I think it'd be good to help prep you for names and focus on the vacancies. So I'll be glad to do that. Okay?
Okay. All right, well, that said, we'll go into Councilman's comments. Let's see here, that'd be one, two?
I'm two.
All right, so since I'm playing mayor for the day, I'll go last. I'm gonna let you go first.
Yeah, I made most of what I was gonna say. I want to thank Jeff, who is available twenty-four seven. He never knows when he might get a text. Always copy Pete. I know sometimes I don't exactly follow protocol, but Jeff takes care of immediately. And I appreciate it, and the residents appreciate it, so.
John?
Yeah, well, I'd like to thank all the guys, Fire Department, Police Department, for the outstanding work they did during the storm. Pete, I'd like to thank you for handling the situation. You were up on it. I mean, you called me several times to let me know what was going on, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for being there, for being, staying up late at night and doing what you did to coordinate this thing. Thank you very much.
I also want to thank the whole city staff, and the issue staff, what they did over the weekend. It was, I know it was a kind of a rough few days, but everybody was out there busy working, and did a great job, and heard some great comments from some people in the city. I was out and about the morning after the storm, not just for my district, but throughout the city. And I saw our crews out there working bright and early, clearing roads and getting things going. So appreciate that. Appreciate the work and effort during the social media. I've had several people say they appreciate getting a response from the city about what was going on. In fact, I directed several people to, from my page, to go to the city page to keep up with what's going on there. We appreciate everything everybody did.
You know, there's not a whole lot you can say that these guys hadn't already said as far as thanking everybody for their, for what they did. I know Chief Bennett, Chief Doughty, ESG, you guys did an amazing job. The city staff with the Command Center, I mean, I've got to see that with my own two eyes, and it was a, it was an awesome thing to see everybody working together. I know that ESG did, had ten crews, it was ten crews of four men, split the city in four quarters to attack the debris problem. They cleared it as quick as they could, worked overtime. I know y'all busted your tail to get this city back to, back to way, you know, normal life, so to speak. But what I would like to ask of you is to keep these surrounding communities and our friends in Florida in your prayers as well, because some of these guys and girls were not as lucky as we were. Their cities are rampaged through this hurricane. And we just, you know, want to keep, you know, our thoughts and prayers with them as they go to rebuild and, you know, try to get back to a little bit of normalcy themselves. So again, our hats off to the city staff, Police and Fire Department, Georgia Power, EMCs for helping get everybody back to normalcy around here. And, you know, thank y'all. And that's all.
Vice Mayor. We need to have a project session for real estate and legal matters.
All right. So do. You have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.